When does the president start?
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, Teresa, you can start.
All right, thank you, Marcus. Welcome to the Village of Buchanan Board of Trustees Meeting of Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Okay, so first on our agenda here is the approval of the minutes for January 4th, 2022. Do I have any corrections, questions, comments?
I have none.
None, okay.
I'm sorry, what do we, we have the January 4th?
Yeah, the January 4th.
Let me see, one second, please, I think I have one note. Okay, on page eight.
Okay.
The first line, first, very top of the page. It says, a motion to approve was presented, to approve this as presented was made by trustee Punchin, seconded by trustee Zachary, with all in favor and opposed by trustee Murray. I think that's contradictory. Right? It shouldn't say with all, maybe if we just say with Anthony Capicotti in favor. And it, we're not all in favor if somebody's opposed, so. You know, with.
I think.
Zachary and Capicotti in favor and opposed by trustee Murray.
Any other comments? On a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the January 25th workshop meeting.
I have none.
I have none.
We good, Nick?
You know, there's one, there's one item that's repeated twice, but I don't think it matters, so I'm not even gonna, no, nothing.
Okay. On a motion to approve?
Two sentences that are repeated twice.
Okay. Psycho error. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Moving on to the regular meeting of February 1st.
I have nothing.
Nothing? Nothing, nothing?
I just have one question. When we have the meeting and we see the attendees that attend by Zoom, when we had live meetings, if people were there, wouldn't we list them on the, on the, on the list of people present for the meeting? And when people are attending by Zoom, should we be listing their names, is my question.
I guess we could do that.
I thought I'll be listed when somebody spoke. Even in a live meeting.
That's what I remember, too.
Yeah, not everybody in the audience.
Not everybody in the audience, we don't know who's in the audience.
Oh, well. Don't you know who's in the audience?
No.
Well, occasionally you see a name that does not define the person, but.
But only when, yeah, only when they speak, they have to identify themselves.
Only when they speak, okay. Just curious, that's fine.
All right. On a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to comments from the floor, agenda items only.
No, no hands raised.
Hands raised, okay. All right. So, under new business resolution, I'm gonna read the resolution. We've been, we've been talking about the accessory dwelling units law for a while. It's New York State legislation, the Senate is 4547A and Assembly is 485854A. Okay, so this will explain a lot of the legislation, too. So where, whereas the New York State Legislature is considering the adoption of the current revision of S-4547A and A-4854A accessory dwelling unit law, which amends the real property law concerning accessory dwelling units by suspending local zoning as it relates to residential zoning districts and land use. Whereas Governor Hochul in the 2022 State of the Address supports the creation of legislation that would impose statewide standards to local zoning, usurping municipal home rules powers. And whereas S-4547A and A-4854A, if adopted, would override local zoning and municipal home rule, permitting accessory apartments as of right with minimal regulation in all residential districts, including multifamily districts, and on any lot regardless of its zoning within existing residential use. Whereas the proposed law would prohibit a municipality's ability to craft specific regulations while considering the impacts of the locality's environment, infrastructure, parking, school enrollment, police and fire departments within its borders. And whereas it is not considering the impact specific to a local municipality, this legislation will have far-reaching effects impacting the health, excuse me, health, safety and quality of life of the residents of the Village of Buchanan. And whereas one-size-fits-all requirements encroaches on the ability of every New Yorker to participate in local planning and community in which they live. And whereas the proposed legislation causes additional concern regarding the conversions of hotel and office to residential as of right without any local oversight. And whereas the Village of Buchanan has a long history of meeting the special housing needs of the community, including the ability to establish accessory apartments since 1989, and now therefore be resolved that the Village of Buchanan adamantly opposes S-4547A and A-4854A accessory dwelling unit law. And be it further resolved that the Village of Buchanan urges the governor of the state of New York and the New York State legislator to preserve legislature, sorry, to preserve and protect municipal home rule and local zoning powers. On a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, hold on, I saw.
Sorry, I was on mute.
Yeah, I saw, yeah, no problem.
I was just wondering, how do we get this to our state legislatures? Or how do we get this written into the minutes of the assembly? Or how do we go about notifying these people that, that we don't want this law?
I think, I think what we should do is send it specifically to Senator Harkins, but you can set it, like we did when we passed the, the law to tax the spent fuel cask, we sent it directly to the head of the Senate and the head of the Assembly. And I would still send it to the governor, too.
Yeah, I think that's, that's exactly what we should do. They have to be notified of our, of our opposition to this, and I'm, I know the municipal officials and the, the mayor's group, I know that they were trying to discuss this also. Are they, is there any organization that is actually collecting resolutions to this effect so that there could be a joint opposition or a joint in favor of this type of legislation? Is there anybody who's doing that right now, do you know?
Well, I, I believe that NICOM was advocating against passage of that law. It's, they, they did, they do have a, on their website, they had an update that Governor Hochul actually took it out of the budget process for, for the current session. She took it out of there on February 18th, so it's temp, right now it's dropped, but we wanna make sure it doesn't come back.
No, I'm sorry, Nick, that, although it was removed from the budget, it's still in committee right now, so. By putting placing it in the budget, it was a way to circumvent the legislation. The legislature, I should say, so that was removed, the opposition, but I would just like to have this sent to NICOM as well as the governor, headed the New York State Senate, as well as the New York State Senate.
Yeah. Well, also the, the sponsors of the bill, I mean, if we draft the letter, it could be go to the sponsors of the bill as well.
Well, Senator, Senator Harkins is. He wrote this one, I believe.
He was, he's a sponsor on the next bill we're talking about, the.
He's a sponsor on the next.
Yeah.
On this one, I'm not sure.
So, you know, the reason why we're doing this also, even though the governor took the, the funding out of the, the budget, New York State budget, this still is a standalone legislation, so.
Okay.
I wanna make sure, boom, and I will be going to.
Thank you for the correction. We need, Sean's right, though, we need to make sure that the, you know, that that our sentiment has to get conveyed.
Well, and I'm going to a WMOA executive session on Thursday, so any information that comes out of that, I'll email everyone and let you know where they're, you know, what the process is with them, too.
Loosely related, NICOM's annual conference and training weekend, well, it's actually a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, is this in May in Lake George, you know, they usually do it in Saratoga or Lake Placid, but it's in Lake George. I intend to attend that, that's, you know, and I, if this is still pending, I'm sure that there'll be people there to discuss it, and I could try to find out at that time where they stand and what's being done.
Well, the budget will be passed by then, I know. It's, it's gotta be passed.
But if it's taken out of the budget, we're worried about the pre-standing legislation.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is, it's a resolution against the proposed New York State legislation establishing a tax on carbon-based fuels. And we had a little discussion at our workshop on this. So I'll read this, and then if there's any questions or comments. Whereas the New York State Legislature is considering the adoption of the current revision to S-3336 Tax on Carbon-Based Fuels Law, which amends the tax law by establishing a tax on carbon-based fuels. And whereas S-3336 and A-77 would add a tax on all carbon-based fuels at a time that fuel prices are increasing. And whereas S-3336 and A-77 is adopted, would increase the cost of all carbon-based fuels even higher. And whereas individuals are having a difficult time to pay their utility bills and fuel for their vehicles, and whereas any increase in carbon-based fuels would be passed down to the end user, and whereas the Village Board of Buchanan objects to any new tax on carbon-based fuels at a time that the cost of these fuels are at their highest point. Well, maybe not the highest point, I'm sure, I'm hearing that they're gonna go higher. Whereas any new tax would make it more difficult or impossible for individuals to pay their utility or gas bill. And now therefore be resolved that the Village of Buchanan adamantly opposes S-3336 and A-77 Carbon-Based Fuels Law, and be it further resolved that the Village of Buchanan urges the governor of the state of New York and the New York Legislature to not pass a law that would negatively affect all residents of the state. On a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
On a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I had brought this up a month or two ago, and the main issue is, is that it is an indiscriminate tax, not only on gasoline, but on any electricity that is generated through any carbon-based fuel, which I think is just ludicrous because the end user almost has no control over what electricity they buy. You can buy a portion of it through solar and through different companies, but this is just not good for New York, or not good for our residents. And because the prices are going up so high, the tax is gonna be a percentage of the cost, so we're not in control of the cost, we're not in control of any of this. We, we can't say who we're buying oil from, so I think this is good, I would urge the, the distribution of this resolution to the same people that we will be distributing the accessory development, accessory use apartment legislation, so we can have our voices heard.
All right. And I'll also check with the WMOA on Thursday if they're, they're gonna be doing a blanket statement also. And then I, I was quite shocked when we got our oil bill the other day for our house, it was $700, and so it was like $390 a gallon, so you know, we're all feeling, we're all feeling the pain here. So we don't need to add more on to it. All in favor?
No.
I apologize.
I still have a comment.
I'm sorry.
First, I wanna, I wanna thank Sean for pushing this, and I also wanna take it a step further. If there's a tax on carbon-based fuels, everything goes up. Because that means trucking costs go up. That means that airplane fares go, anything that, you know, I mean, everything in our economy is, is, seems to start with, with fuel, production, production costs, factory costs, you know, shipping costs, track, you know, right, right across the line, so everything goes up, not just the obvious. And to me, one of the big objections is, if the ultimate goal is to reduce carbon emissions, this won't do it. I don't know exactly what this will translate to per gallon of gas, but when gas was 280, I had to fill up once a week. When gas is 380, I still have to fill up once a week. You know, I mean, it's, you know, it, it's gonna get, it would get hard for some people, I understand that, but, but people still have to heat their homes and use their cars, so, you know, if the goal is to reduce carbon emissions, you know, which I think is a good idea, I just don't think this is a way to do it. If the goal, if that's the goal, you know, there are ways that people can do it. They can try to reduce their consumption, they can lower their thermostat, next thing they buy a car, they could try to get one that's more fuel-efficient. Plastic i- is made from, you know, the raw, the raw material is petroleum, so, so reducing plastic use, you know, there's things each person can do to try, to try to help out in reducing the carbon footprint. I think this law is just a, a non-necessary tax in a already high-tax state.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Anyone else have a comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, the next resolution, I'd like to make a motion to hold this over. We will be discussing this and, and a few other things in executive session, so I'd like to hold this over. On a motion?
What's the motion?
The motion is to hold over the the agreement with McCarthy Consulting Services regarding Holtech.
Sure. Somebody explain to the public why this is, why this is justified in executive session. I'm not saying it is or isn't, I just.
Okay, because we are going to be negotiating, and we're going to be talking potentially about a contract, and then we need to further discuss it before we can vote on it.
Thank you.
So, on a motion?
All right, this is not for, you know, what, I mean, you, this doesn't even belong here. Right, this, we're not voting on a motion here, because.
Well, we're, I'm asking.
The motion would be whether we want to approve this or disapprove, we, we still have to discuss it in, in a workshop, so.
So I want to remove this from the agenda because we're not gonna vote on it.
Marcus, isn't that up to the, the mayor to just to remove it? We don't have to vote on it, do we?
I, I, I don't believe so, Stephanie has something else to say, I mean, the mayor can just say, when I adjourn it or remove it, it's the mayor's agenda.
Okay, so, just so everyone knows.
Well.
Item C, I'd like to remove this from the agenda, we're just not prepared at this point to discuss it further.
Now, if we discuss the, 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 the topic that this is related to is the tax negotiations. And if we discuss this in executive session, and then if we do want to have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, do we need that motion? And then would we come back into regular session and make that motion?
You have to make the motion to expend village funds in public.
That's what I'd say.
Public, so you couldn't amend the contract without, number one, the applicant's authority, he would have to approve any amendments you would make, and you would have to discuss it in an open session to vote to expend the funds.
Because we're expending, so let me clarify further that this will be discussed at the next meeting. So if we're going to approve this, it will be approved at the next meeting.
Oh, is that?
So you're taking off the agenda tonight?
We're taking off the agenda, thank you. Yes, thank you.
My, my ask, why or what, what the issue was?
Because we have to discuss it in executive session, we're not exactly prepared to vote on this right now, and when we go into executive session, it will also include other, other negotiations with Holtech, so we can discuss those both in executive session. Okay. All right, so, D, consider a motion to appoint members to the Recreation Advisory Committee. This came about, we had a resident that was concerned about the playground behind the highway department. I know I had mentioned at the board, that meeting that night, that perhaps we should form a Recreation Advisory Committee. So I do have people that I would like to appoint to that, appoint on that at this time. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following people to the Buchanan Recreation Advisory Committee, and that would be Jeremy Basso, Megan Starska, Kylie Bernard, and Rick Boyle. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Could you read those names again, please?
Sure. It was Jeremy Basso.
Yep.
Megan Starska, I think I'm pronouncing her name correctly. What is it? I'm sorry.
Starcha.
Starcha, okay. And Kylie Bernard. And Rick Boyle.
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, they'll be, um, communicating with me on this, or is this a completely separate?
No, no, we're, they're gonna communicate with you. We're gonna set something up, and there, you know, it's gonna be an overview of the facilities that we have now.
Good.
So you would be the best to do that. And then they will meet and discuss what they think the needs are of the village.
And, and Teresa, just to clarify, I mean, Bob Wheeler will have to be involved, he maintains all the facilities, so there'll be accommodation of Nancy and Bob working with this committee, absolutely.
Yeah, the, you know, the original, the original meeting, you know, I would need Bob and Nancy to.
Absolutely.
Sit and talk with them and, you know, discuss, you know, what we have and what potentially needs to be upgraded or repaired, you know, what you, what your thoughts are also.
And Laura Wentz is not interested in being on that committee?
I don't think she was. I had asked her that evening if she was interested, but I think I had asked twice, and, and she didn't get back to me, but if she still is interested, she's more than welcome to join.
I thought she said yes.
So this is four people, and this is for, this is for good people, but will they also be reaching out to residents? In, in, as they form that, or is this just something that they're gonna brainstorm on?
No, they, they could also, they could have a, a special meeting, they could have, we could send out perhaps something in our newsletter, our monthly newsletter for comments or suggestions.
There should be some way for the public to feed back to them.
Sure.
Because as good as, as good as they are, they're only four, they're only four residents.
Right, no, but this will be a collaborative, you know, joint works here. So, you know, we could, we could do a survey, you know, to see what people's thoughts are, they could come up with thoughts and then do a survey from that thought. You know, so it's, it's a work.
However they do it, I think that is important to get some public input. Not just on repairs, but on new things.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Generally, when, when a committee's set up, there should be some kind of charter, there should be some goals, there should be a timeline. There should be, you know, what you're, what you're looking to do, you know, is there gonna be a budget set up for them, you know? So this is kinda, when I saw this on the agenda, I, I didn't see anything, you know, it seems.
I don't think there would be a budget set up for them.
No.
I think just an opinion by residents who want to give and suggest to us things to do around the village, either, either improve and/or add to or subtract from and things like that. I don't think this is, you know, something that needs a budget.
I was planning on sitting with them at the first meeting to go over, to go over all of those things, to set up parameters of, you know, what they should be looking at, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna box them in where they're, they're not thinking out of the box, so I don't wanna come out with, like, what I think would be. I want them to be free enough to make suggestions and talk to people of what their thoughts are for the future here, of, you know, for the recreation and things. So I will sit with them at the first meeting, and we will, you know, have for best, best thing, a game plan of what they'd like to, of what we'd like to accomplish with this. So did I do on a motion yet?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, and then we're gonna have our recreation supervisor, Nancy, she wanted to speak to us tonight.
Yes, hi. Um, so I decided that I would really like to do, okay, I take that back, I don't really want to, but I will do the after camp, because it's a big part of the camp, and a lot of people have the need for it. The after camp runs from three to six. So a couple years ago, when I started this, I just put a flat rate out there of $30 a day. I'd like to increase that to $40 a day. Some people do five days, some people do two, some people do one, and, and they can switch it up as much as they want, actually. I'd like to increase it because the staff that stays afterwards will be getting $13 an hour, because that's an extension from their already long, hot day with camp. So.
It's two hours?
No, it's three.
Three.
Three hours.
Three hours, it's three to six, so, um, I just wanna know if I can go ahead and increase that from 30 to 40 dollars.
So that's $40 a day?
And that's per person, there's no discount on that, correct?
Right, so that would be 200 additional dollars for a parent with the after-school, after-school.
If they choose to do it. If they choose to do it. So like last year, it was, you know, $30 a day.
What do you do?
Going up, including paying my staff, so.
Nancy, what did you do in the past when, let's say that, what were the three hours of the after camp? What were the hours?
Three to six.
Three to six. So what would you do if somebody didn't show up at six?
Um, that was a rare occasion, but the staff that was there, if I wasn't already there, would call me, I would come down. We'd make a phone call to the parent or guardian. If they're not reachable, we go down the list of who their emergency contacts are, and then eventually they would be taken over and will wait with, at the police station for them. But we never do that, so, yeah.
Okay, and then? And then if somebody, if one of the counselors has to stay after they get paid, was there a charge for people that came late?
Um, no, and there could be. I could also implement that as well.
I mean, if you didn't have a problem with it.
Didn't have a problem.
Huh?
We did not have a problem with it.
Yeah, so then maybe it's not necessary to go that route?
Right.
But, uh.
I'm looking for the increase so that, you know, I hire three to four people a day, depending on how many kids I have, you know, and the counselors don't necessarily do it every single day. Some will do it Monday, Wednesday, Friday, others will do it Tuesday. You know, so.
And there are enough kids that we're not losing money on that?
No, you're making money on the after camp.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So salaries justify the raise, the increase?
Oh, absolutely. So, for example, if I have three people working the after camp, I'm paying them $13 an hour, so they're getting 33, or, you know, $39 a day, and I'm charging the after camp $40 a day. So I only need three people for after camp, to wash out three people, but if I only had three people, I wouldn't have three counselors stay, I'd have two. I always have more than one counselor stay. Yeah, it, it made like $11,000. We brought in $11,000 the last time we did it in 2019.
I mean, we don't, we don't wanna lose money, but I, you know what I mean, it's.
Teresa, I just wanted to know that.
Fifty dollars more.
I just wanted to know that, that revenue.
For all five days, Teresa, these are people who.
Okay.
Some of them, yes, I, I need to work, I don't get home till 5:30, quarter to six, you know, but the majority are parents will pick up between 4:30 and 5:30.
Okay.
But it's a flat rate regardless.
Okay.
Well, our labor, our labor costs went up, I don't have any issue going from 30 to 40.
Okay. Marcus, I'm sorry, I, I interrupted you.
No, no problem, I was just trying to say that these revenues with the summer camp is also, is part of the overall recreation program that helps offset the costs for the pool. So this is one piece of the puzzle that actually makes us get, go in the black for the recreation programs, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, yeah, cuz I know we, we've discussed it many times before, that we lose money with the pool, if it was a standalone.
We didn't lose as much last year, and if we had more people, if we didn't have COVID and we had more people, it would have worked out way better. But we're not running the kiddie pool again this year, so I'm expecting more campers. So we should have a, a better outcome this year, we really should, let's hope.
Yeah. All right, so what's the board's pleasure on that? I'm, you know, I could, I could add that on to the agenda to vote on this. Nancy, do you need the answer today on that?
I don't need it, but I would like it within ASAP, because I wanna shoot the email, registration starts Monday, and I wanna shoot email out, letting them know I am gonna have the after camp, cuz some parents will decide whether or not to join the camp, based on that.
I don't see why we can't make a motion.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that the board was ready to, to do that.
I just wanted to make sure you're good with the price.
Okay, all right, it sounds like the board is.
This board was born ready.
So I'd like to make a motion to increase the after camp fee from $30 to $40?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nancy, thanks for joining in.
You're welcome.
Okay, information from. Okay, information from officers and departments, justice court reports. Those are received, one of the reports was $13,325. The other report was 283, so that's received and filed. Police report of January 2022, Rich, do you want to take a minute?
Yeah, I'll take it, yeah. On January 6, 2022, approximately 12:30 AM, Sergeant Palmietto observed an open door to village business, the business was closed for the night. Sergeant Palmietto checked the location and determined that door was accidentally left open. Key holder for the location was notified and the door was secured. Thank, thankful to that person that we have an officer who was very observant. On January 6, 2022, at approximately 4:30 PM, police officer Tierney was advised that an unknown tow truck left a vehicle on a village roadway and appears to be abandoned. Police officer Tierney was able to locate the owner who advised that his vehicle was towed for another jurisdiction and dropped in Buchanan for an unknown reason. The owner immediately had the vehicle towed to the proper location. On January 13, 2022, at approximately 11:15 PM, police officer Tierney received a call from another police department advising that they have information on a possible grand larceny that took place in Buchanan. Based on the information provided, police officer Tierney was able to locate a victim and determine that the crime occurred outside of the village. The proper department was notified and handled. On January 21, 2022, at approximately 2:10 PM, Detective Loachter responded to a report of a domestic incident at a village residence. Detective Loachter was able to determine that nothing criminal occurred, no further incidents were reported. And thank you to our police officers, always on the job. And you never know when they're going to get really hit with something really bad. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rich. Highway report, January 2022. Household trash, 77 tons, bulk pickup and dumpsters, 21 tons. E-waste, TVs and monitors, TVs, 24 monitors, 10. Metal pickup, 2.21 tons, and Christmas tree pickup, 152 trees. So I, I like to read that out so people, you know, see what's going on and a, a report from the water department and the equipment that was repaired. Bob, do you have anything to add to the sanitation highway report?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Waste water plant report, treated wastewater. Oh my goodness, 8 million gallons and sludge removal, 129,000 gallons. There were six reports submitted to the DEC and the Westchester County Department of Health. Okay. Um, building department, we have the building permits issued and the CO issued here. Buchanan, oh, wait, building department, planning board, planning board is the next, and that's the meeting of January 20th, received and filed. Buchanan Engine Company, there were EM, eight EMS assist, other emergencies too, and mutual aid given were six. And prosecutors report, we have that, that's received. We will, we keep reviewing that. Attorneys report, Stephanie, do you have anything for us this evening?
Um, I have two things for executive session. And just an update, we had nothing in zoning last month, we have one matter in planning. Which is an application for a special permit for an accessory apartment, the public hearing was opened and continued until next month, which is March 17. And so the public hearing will continue then. And everything else I have is for executive session, thanks.
All right, thank you. Marcus, administrators report, what do you have for us this evening?
As, as most people have seen, Con Ed has continued working on Tate Avenue with the new gas line that's continuing on. I heard from the contractor for the pavilion. They should start, the materials started arriving today, so work should start anytime now. According to the contract, about four weeks of work to take place. They'll be able to work around the ice skating rink for now, they don't see any problems with that. The electrician, thank God, he recovered from his, his illness and he should be starting soon as well. So the pavilion works, hopefully start working pretty soon. Con Ed is in, is working with the, with the DOT on our engineer regarding the new sidewalk on on Route 9A, Con Ed and DOT have gotten into a little battle regarding moving their gas lines, so that's work in progress as we speak. There was work that was done on Tate Avenue beyond this work on Tate Avenue further down some years ago. And it does, it started caving in a little bit if you drive down.
It's by, just before First Street, you're talking about.
Correct, correct, correct. There was some back and forth with Con Ed, but they've agreed to dig it up, see what's going on, and then repave from curb to the center line. But this is right along the curb line, so at least they'll do all the way to the center line. Originally, they were going to only do a little, like, one foot patch past a little trench that caused the damage. So at least they'll get that done, so we'll have that section of road milled and paved, so that's moving forward. I know Sean Murray brought it up to me again regarding the, the Con Ed's imposed on, on Long Lindsey Avenue, I think it is, around that area.
Yeah, Lindsey and Albany Post Road.
Yeah, I heard back from Con Ed, and today, they're going to try to set up a conference call that has some issues. And they will give me some more details, when I get those details, I'll email the board on that one as well. That's been going out for almost a year now, so.
Yeah, thanks for following up on that again. I know you've spoken to them several times.
Multiple times, so, so I'm going to get a call with the supervisor and get an update and try to get that to you as well. As soon as I get that, I'll email the board. That's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. We're going to do trustees reports, trustee function, what do you have for us this evening?
Up front, I'd just like to be in solidarity with all the people in Ukraine. I think everybody in the United States is solidly behind those fighting totally ridiculous invasion of their country. I also want to wish everybody a very happy St. Patrick's Day. And on that issue, we're not having a parade this year, obviously it would have been this Saturday coming up. But the reason that we're not is because of the COVID would, would not, would not make available to us our biggest fundraising thing, which was the party we would have at the, at the firehouse. So hopefully we'll be back in place next year. And then thing I noticed on the New York State Indian Point Committee that they have their schedule of meetings, and I guess I'm pretty angry about this, that one of the meetings that they're having, there was two I want to point out, one of the meetings they're having is on St. Patrick's Day. And I think if it was any other ethnic group that's represented in the United States, maybe all 180 of them in the United States, that they would never think of scheduling a meeting on St. Patrick's evening. The day that Irish culture is celebrated in this country. I, I sent emails back, I got responses from, from two of the members of the committee who agree with me. And I've yet to hear from many of the politicians on it. I, I'm hoping that they will boycott this meeting, it's a disgrace. It's, it says if Irish people don't mean anything in this country. And it really gets me angry. And the second part of it is also they continue their behavior, and they have a meeting on Pearl Harbor Day. The town of Portland, Peekskill, Buchanan, and a lot of the veterans groups get together every Pearl Harbor and usually have a meeting, not a meeting, a ceremony in the evening. So once again, I don't know who's doing this in their committee. But I'd like to, that somehow, some way this gets out. Encourage everybody who wants to write or call their representatives who are going to be at this meeting and to tell them to change the times. That's all I got, thank you.
All right, thank you. I have my shamrocks on, Rich.
Good.
Yeah, no, when they had told me they were setting up the meeting, New York State, and so it's the New York State Decommissioning Oversight Board. They have it scheduled for March 17th at 6 o'clock, so thank you, I was, I was going to mention that, so. All right, trustee Zachary, what do you have for us tonight?
Here we go. Now, you could hear me now?
Yes, sir.
So I am very happy to see that the COVID is, is diminishing. Hopefully that continues. I saw in the news today that the positivity rate for our area is down to 1.6% and is still dropping, so you know, it's, it'll be nice to free up our behavior, it'd be nice to get back to live meetings at some point this year. It'll be nice to have an actual live Buchanan Day. I'm sorry that the St. Patrick's Day parade did not work out, but hopefully we're going in the right direction here. I want to also as trustee Punchin said, I want to express my horror at what's going on over in Ukraine. And my amazing respect for those people who are really they, you know, like the New Hampshire license plate could be their motto, live free or die. They, they mean business, they, they just don't want to live under that, under that repression of the dictatorial Russia. And what they're doing, I think, is an incredible inspiration. And you know, that's a real fight for freedom. You know, sometimes we think of other things as being a fight for freedom, people are talking about mask freedom. Well, okay, there's a lot of individual rights, but, but everything else seems to pale in comparison to that. Living under a dictatorship or fighting for your own country. So my heart goes out to them. I, on the logo contest, I think I mentioned that the last meeting that there were four finalists. And that the judging committee recommended some minor tweaks and those people are now being given a brief period to redesign. I've got one resubmission already. And so hopefully by the next month's meeting, we'll have a winner. If anybody is going to, you know, we're not using village money for the $500 prize. So if any, I know Marcus and Stephanie and myself are putting in some money, if anybody else wants to put in money, I'd ask that you just let me know and, and get, whether it's 20 bucks, 50 bucks, whatever in the next week or so, so I can consolidate that. I'd appreciate that. And I want to thank that, the committee of judges who are Cheryl Gilmore, Marie Bell, Tanya Drezek, Stella Faloco, Colleen Laudergan, and Becky McEl, McElanion. Did I pronounce that right? McElanion?
McElanion.
McElanion, yeah. So I want to thank them, they did a great job, very thorough job in the judging with specific comments and point system and, and none of the names were associated with the designs, it was very objective. I want to thank them. And I also want to just kind of congratulate the village and and the mayor for coming up with the idea of the ice rink, when we would, on Saturday, when we passed by there, there were, there had been 25 people, so and other, some other, somebody else came with their young daughter while we were there. So, you know, we're still figuring out what the, how much it'll get used, how much, what the hours should be and other things, but the synthetic ice seems to be a hit. And I think it's a nice, nice thing for the village to have. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thanks, Nick. Anthony. Capicati, trustee Capicati, what do you have for us tonight?
All right. That's the first time I ever started speaking without mute on. That was a joke.
You're getting better.
Yeah, that's better. A little bit of practice.
Yep.
Um, so, so a couple of things, Marcus, the Con Ed restoration, I wanted to bring this up at the last meeting. You know, you spoke about a, a washout on Tate Avenue. And Con Ed's going to dig it up and find out what's going on. And Teresa sent me a, a list of the standards that we use for, for restoration. And who, who's monitoring these standards? Who, who's, who's checking up on that?
Hot Engineering is, does the inspections on the restoration.
Okay, because that's, that's pretty much what happened in the washout. And just, just to make it clear, like, you know, we, we need to have onsite. You know, somebody there to check on what's going on every once in a while, just so they, we keep them up to up to par with what they're supposed to be doing.
Agreed.
You know, they, they do try to get, try to take some cheap routes, concrete is expensive, you know. All that's, all materials now are very expensive, so let's just keep up on that. And, and when they do the restoration, is it just from curb to center of the road, or is it going to be, we're getting curb to curb over there?
Uh, the gas line they're doing now would be curb to curb. The old gas line that washed out a little bit, it'll be curbed to center of the line because it happened a couple of years ago.
Okay, all right. Because that Tate Avenue, we paved that, we didn't pave that section, all right, a couple of years ago?
Yeah, it was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, about, I think about five years ago. Bob is online, Bob remembers, I think four or five years ago was when that was done. I don't know if Bob wants to, if he remembers the date.
Yeah, about five years ago. All right. I just, just, just monitor what they do, that's all. I mean, they, they try to cut corners, just like everybody else, so. You know, it's our road, we got to protect them.
Anthony, can I ask what's, what you were referring to, the washout, what is that, was it, I'm not aware of it.
Marcus brought up a washout on the side of, on a curb line, they said Con Ed was going to repair, it was their responsibility.
Oh, where they damaged the curb?
No, 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 if you go down Tate Avenue, I'm on First, First Street on the right-hand side, where the trench was, where the they wanted to put the gas line in, you'll see a little depression in the road, there's like a depression and a couple of little holes, so you won't even notice them until actually you look for it. But Bob saw it and we reported to Con Ed and it took a while, but they agreed to dig it all up and go to the center line.
Okay, all right, thanks. Sorry to interrupt, Anthony.
No, that's all, it's no big deal. That, um, yeah, that's good that he recognized that because that's only going to get worse. Um, you know, I, I don't really have any, thank God, I, I know with the advanced the, the, the rate of COVID has gone down and our kids are going back with no masks tomorrow, which is very exciting for my family. Kids are very excited about that, which is a good thing in our community. And you know, I don't really have much else. I hope, I hope we get back to live meetings soon too. I agree with, with Nick on that, let's get back to live meetings. I, I would enjoy to see everybody. You guys are great people.
And I think March 16th, I think it's, the governor has up till March 16th and then that's the end of the where we're allowed to have Zoom meetings.
All right, good.
I'll even put on shoes instead of slippers.
Wonderful, we'd like that. Okay, Sean, what do you have for us tonight?
I just had a couple of questions for Marcus. When I was going through the minutes, I had forgotten some of the things that we had approved and we wanted to move forward on. And I just don't remember where we left it. One of the things that we had voted on and approved was to the property on Lynn's Cove, we had the issue with the city of Peekskill, we hired somebody to do a survey, I know there was discussions with Peekskill. Then I believe the Peekskill Common Council was supposed to make a decision on whether we were to purchase that, or could you, could you remind me where we're off, where we are with that, please, Marcus?
Sure, I had a discussion with the assessor and with the town, the city manager. City manager had a discussion with the city council, according, now this was, the city manager has just resigned, so he's no longer there. So I had a call in now with the interim city manager to find, get an update. So the idea was they didn't seem to have a problem with transferring that property to the village and not having to pay for anything. So I'm waiting to get a, I've called back now from the acting city manager to see what direction the city council, city council of the city of Peekskill was standing on, removing the boundaries from the city to the village.
Talk to my water.
That would be good.
And there was another committee that we had approved, that was called the Technical Assistance for Nuclear Communities. Do we have an update on that? Are we going to have any future discussions, or I, I forgot what we said we were going to do with that?
They were starting to work on something, we approved that. They were starting to work on something. We approved them and they were going to be working on something. And then they were going to come back to us with their findings.
Did they give us a timeline? And we're not, we're not paying for anything, right?
No, 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 that comes out of the fifteen million dollar fund that Nida Lowey set up for, uh, nuclear, um, nuclear communities.
So do do we have a timeline? Because I I went over the resolution and I didn't see any timeline or milestones.
Yeah, I forgot what they said now, but they, I knew that the last I heard is they were going to come back to us with with whatever their findings and come back to the board and have a discussion with the board. Marcus, do you remember if there was a timeline?
No, I know they've asked for, they also gave you an update. They asked for data. They actually looked for the zoning map. They looked at the area of the overlay, this for Route nine A. In fact, they asked for the assessment of all those properties, which we actually sent the assessment row on that. So they're all doing work behind the scenes right now. Um, I I I'll ask them if they have a timeline when they think might be completed, but I know they're still, they were gathering data as of today.
So do they? They must have a budget, right? They must have a budget from the state. And they must have to submit some expenses or some, show that they're doing some work to use it up. But shouldn't we be verifying the amount of hours or the amount of time that they're using? You know, it's ki- it seemed kind of open-ended and I just didn't want it to be so open-ended that we don't get a product back, you know, before the money's gone.
They, um, the the, they work with the federal government. So I'm, I'm, I'm sure there's oversight from the federal government, um, with with them. Because that's, that's how they're getting their funding.
Did they tell us, Marcus, did they tell us when we were coming, when they were going to come back to us, or?
They had a, they had a timeline, but I don't remember that, Sean, so I'll ask them. I was asking for an update when I get back tomorrow and and I, if I get an update, I'll definitely get it down to everybody, okay?
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Of course.
And for executive session, I I'd also like to add something. The, uh, update of the lawsuit, we haven't had an update of the lawsuit that we've been involved with for quite some time now.
Oh, okay, yes, okay.
It's been, it's been a couple of months since we talked about it.
Okay, good.
And the last thing I have, I just want to encourage everybody to come out to vote in the next couple of weeks, no matter who you vote for. It's everybody's right. The people in Ukraine are fighting to keep that right. We should be at least exercising the rights that everybody who, uh, who's run for us, who fought for, for us and to keep our rights available. So whoever you vote for, it doesn't matter as long as you come out, make your voice heard. Exercise what people have given their lives for. And that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Sean. Um, my report, um, also with the Ukraine, uh, Ukraine, I I have the utmost respect for these people. They're fighting for their freedom and their country. Um, I guess out of, out of bad comes good because I I'm just amazed to see how the world has come together. And and what really shocked me, Switzerland is a neutral country and and they're, they're getting involved. So, you know, out of bad comes good. Um, we we hope these people stay strong and and can defeat the evil that's on their doorstep. Um, also, um, if you want to look on beautif- the Buchanan Beautification Committee, uh, the circle, we had put in lighting there. The lighting is the blue and yellow, which is their Ukrainian, um, colors for their flag. So, you know, it shows that we we all stand in solidarity with those people. Um, I have been working with a group of people from different areas in the country that have nuclear power plants. And and this goes back a couple of years. And it's the Stranded Act. It's a sensible, timely relief for America's nuclear districts economic development. So this, the Stranded Act, we've been back and forth working on it. There's been some movement on it. There's, um, it's still in play, you know, we haven't, we haven't given up on it. Um, I have spoken to Senator Schumer's office, Meghan Glander, and also, um, Senator Gillibrand. So what's happening, just so I can keep you guys up to speed, it was, we were looking for the D O E to give these communities money because of the spent nuclear waste. Um, we've become de facto storage facilities and we strongly felt that the Department of Energy should reimburse these communities because we're stuck with this stuff until it can be moved out and it's not fair to these communities. That was not the agreement, um, that was made years ago. So, um, that is moving there, there, um, there's some funding now. They're shifting it over to the E D A. So there's some, there's, there's work going on with the funding on that. So I just want to let everybody know it's, it's, it's still moving forward. Um, the grand opening of the skating rink will be this weekend on Saturday. The rink will be open twelve to four. We will have raffles at three o'clock and hot chocolate and refreshments, so please come out. If you haven't seen the skating rink or skated on it, please come out. Uh, it'll be a, it'll be a fun time. And, uh, I think that's all I have for this evening. Does somebody else have a question? I'm sorry. Rich is laughing. What are you laughing at, Rich? Did I say something funny?
No, no, no.
Something else, okay.
I I pushed the screen down and Marcus called to say it wasn't very attractive.
Oh, okay, all right, little side joke there. Okay. So next is comments from the floor. Do we have any comments from the floor? Any hands raised?
No hands raised so far.
Okay, let's give it up. I'm sorry, Anthony, what did you say?
We got hand raised.
The ice skating rink was on Sunday, Saturday.
It's, um, this, the rink is open from twelve to four, but at three o'clock, there'll be raffles. And there'll be hot chocolate and and refreshments, um, from twelve to four, but the raffles will be at three.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Eileen, you can unmute yourself. You're, you're ready to talk.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, I want to thank you for the two letters that are being sent regarding that carbon tax. Thank you, Sean, and the accessory dwelling apartments. I think they're important, uh, that we speak up and speak out. Uh, it not in favor of this. This does not help us at all. Um, also, I just want to let you know, when kids are at nursery or at, um, any of the daycare centers, if they're not picked up after six o'clock or picked up by six o'clock, the parents are charged fifteen dollars or more for fifteen minutes. So, just so that you know, and they're paying about sixteen hundred dollars a month uh, for daycare, uh, from anywhere from seven to six, you know, whatever the case might be, but they do charge. So in the event that does happen, um, you can check around at the different daycare centers. Um, Teresa, I know you got a, uh, from the workshop, I know you've got a decision or opinion from the Ethics Board. Is that available to the public, to read, to view? How do you, we get a hold of that?
Stephanie, would that, that would be, that would be, uh, able to be public information, correct? I just want to just verify. Okay, yes.
Okay, so is that a foil or is that on, is that documented someplace?
Um.
I would, I would say foil it. Any documents for the village should be foiled. So you have, while you foil it and we can, and then we can, it'll be done pretty quickly.
Okay, all right, I will, I will get this to the village hall. Okay.
Okay, so, uh, if any, if if any of the voters want to know about that Board of Ethics from the Westchester County Board, uh, that was a dispute for, um, code, uh, possible um, refusal from an official regarding any kind of, um, negotiations. Uh, they can get that, as Teresa just stated, and Marcus had, as a foil from the, uh, office. I think it's important that we know that. Okay, that's all I've got.
Down to the ice skating rink on Saturday? Nope, she's gone. Okay. Any other comments? Thanks, Eileen. Any other comments from the floor? Oh, Eileen's got her hand raised again.
She, she, uh, Eileen, just unmute yourself. You're still on. Unmute yourself.
Oh, no, I, I just hit it by accident. Oh, just good luck on the elections, everybody.
All right, thanks, Eileen.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the floor? If not, I will make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, and whole tech negotiations.
Oh, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.